Ask that each commissioner please respond with a "here" when I call out their name. Commissioner Doan.
Here and I have brand new hearing aids, so you'll see me fiddling with the votes on them because they're really loud.
Commissioner Duggan.
Here.
Commissioner Isaac.
Here.
Commissioner Sanders.
Here.
I will now close the regular session and the board will convene an executive session. Will the district recorder please read the executive session script?
Certainly, an executive session of the board is called under O R S one nine two dot six six zero two H to consult with counsel concerning the legal rights and duties of a public body with regard to current litigation or litigation likely to be filed.
We are ready when you are.
I will now reconvene our regular board meeting. We will now move into reports from the chief executive and management staff.
Good evening, President Sanders commissioners. Since we had a long executive session, I'll try to keep this a little bit short. Are you not hearing me? Oh, Commissioner Fisher, okay. But you can hear me, okay? All right, I want to highlight a milestone that we've had on the operations side. As you know, in preparation for the water supply integration, we've been on a campaign to do unidirectional flushing throughout our system. We completed the two-year-long flushing of our entire distribution system. Hundred percent of our distribution system, we've gone through the entire, the entirety of our pipe system. It's completed in anticipation of the water supply system. And again, that is to assure water quality when we do that trans, when we do that transition from the Portland system to the Willamette system. Flushing through the hydrants remove buildup sediment. It also verifies the hydrants themselves and the valves. So it's good operational operation to be out there and, and looking those. But the important part here is it's an important part of our delivering the high-quality water that we want. Want to give you an update on leadership changes? I think I've spoken to most of you about this, but Dave Kraska plans to transition from TVWD employment as the WWSP draws to an end next June 30. He's given us plenty of time upfront to plan for that. And Joel Bennett, who is here joining us tonight, she was, was our Assistant Water Supply Program Director. She now has accepted the position to fill Dave's shoes. We're going to keep the two of them working together during this transition time. But in the meantime, Joel has joined our leadership team, and she will handle all the administrative duties for the department that she now leads. Dave will continue to provide his leadership to the team. He will focus on completing the capital project delivery, and Joel will pivot and focus more on the operations, getting ready for the future operations. This is a bit of a change since they've been working together on both aspects. It'll be more of a change of focus for the two. So thanks to Dave for the excellent team he built and his ongoing leadership. In fact, his preparation to have Joel prepared for such assignment. Congratulations to Joel on the new assignment. And in fact, something that you may not know is Joel has done a lot of work to prepare herself for that. She's completed her master's of public administration recently. So congratulations on that. And we're looking forward to Joel's contribution to our leadership team. The September work session, I'm not sure that we are going to need it. We have it on the, on the list in the event that you want to talk further about the water rate process. But it will come immediately after the Labor Day holiday. And unless we talk about the water rate process, we have no other issues of an urgent matter that we would like to talk, talk to you about. So we will hold it, and maybe at the end of this meeting you can tell us whether or not you think we should schedule the September work session. But staff's recommendation is that we would cancel that work session with no pending items. My schedule, I'll be out of the office August 25th to September 1st. I'm going to celebrate my mother's 94th birthday. So it's kind of exciting for us as a family. In my absence, Andrew Carlstrom will be the AIC for the CEO on August 25th through the 27th. And then Tim Boylan will fill in from the 28th through the 1st. With that, I will turn it over to Justin Carlton, who's going to give tonight's directors report.
Good evening, President Fisher and commissioners. Tonight I'm wanting to provide a little more insight into the adopted strategic initiative that the finance department is undertaking as part of the 2527 strategic plan. So we have one initiative for the upcoming biennium, and that's to establish the business processes and tools required to perform the duties of the managing agency once we are in operations. Or as Paul likes to call it, we're going to redo the plumbing. And I'd like to thank Copilot for the image. I tried it in ChatGPT and Copilot, and Copilot was definitely a lot better just for future reference. So what all does that entail as we're transitioning from the construction phase to the operations phase? A couple of key points. The WWS IGA Exhibit One, which is what lays out the ownership allocation, that's really been sort of the governing document that we rely on in terms of how we constructed, the accounting, and the information that we track and report on as it relates to the construction phase. So the costs are allocated to the partners based on ownership capacity. The costs are really project-based in terms of what we're, we're tracking. So we have actually contracts, projects, projects become assets. And so that's the emphasis of what it is that we have to track, report on, and the data that we use to, to share with our partners in terms of allocating costs. The primary system of record is E-Builder, which is our program management information system. So it's really a central repository for everything related to budget information, the actual spend, contract information. We have terabytes and terabytes of data related to different process approvals. And, and so it was, it was a highly customized and configurable, configurable, not customized. Tim's not here, you would have corrected me on that. Configurable system that we built specifically for the program. And so we've been relying on that. And we're going to be transitioning away from that in the future. And then lastly, in terms of what gets reviewed and approved, we have this program team that we've established with the WWSP that does the reviews and approvals of invoices. We still have our internal WWSS or WWSP leadership, functional managers do the final approval. So a TVWD employee always signs off on these things. But there's a whole support group in place that actually helps move those things along expeditiously. As we transition to the operations phase, we're now focusing a lot of what we're building out on the WWSS IGA Exhibit Six, which you may recall, the financial procedures were actually amended last year. And so we had our consultant work with the finance committee and the management committee. We revised the financial procedures based on sort of the future state of the WWSS. And so now we're going to be managing to those procedures. So now costs are going to be allocated based on ownership capacity as well as usage. So we have some things that are fixed in nature that are based on, on the amount people own versus based on the amount of water that is being produced for the benefit of each partner. Costs are going to focus on the activities that we're doing. So different activities had different costs associated with them as well as locations of those activities. So we had to build out a system that was able to track not just what we were doing, but where we're doing it. And it's going to rely on more systems now. So Logos ERP, our financial management software, City Works, our computerized maintenance management system, as well as our SCAD
We are ready when you are.
I will now reconvene our regular board meeting. We will now move into reports from the chief executive and management staff.
Good evening, President Sanders commissioners. Since we had a long executive session, I'll try to keep this a little bit short. Are you not hearing me? Oh, Commissioner Fisher, okay. But you can hear me, okay? All right, I want to highlight a milestone that we've had on the operations side. As you know, in preparation for the water supply integration, we've been on a campaign to do unidirectional flushing throughout our system. We completed the two-year-long flushing of our entire distribution system. Hundred percent of our distribution system, we've gone through the entire, the entirety of our pipe system. It's completed in anticipation of the water supply system. And again, that is to assure water quality when we do that trans, when we do that transition from the Portland system to the Willamette system. Flushing through the hydrants, remove buildup sediment. It also verifies the hydrants themselves and the valves. So it's good operational operation to be out there and and looking those. But the important part here is it's an important part of our delivering the high-quality water that we want. Want to give you an update on leadership changes? I think I've spoken to most of you about this, but Dave Kraska plans to transition from TVWD employment as the WWSP draws to an end next June 30. He's given us plenty of time upfront to plan for that. And Joel Bennett, who is here joining us tonight. She was was our Assistant Water Supply Program Director. She now has accepted the position to fill Dave's shoes. We're going to keep the two of them working together during this transition time. But in the meantime, Joel has joined our leadership team, and she will handle all the administrative duties for the department that she now leads. Dave will continue to provide his leadership to the team. He will focus on completing the capital project delivery, and Joel will pivot and focus more on the operations, getting ready for the future operations. This is a bit of a change since they've been working together on both aspects. It'll be more of a change of focus for the two. So thanks to Dave for the excellent team he built and his ongoing leadership. In fact, his preparation to have Joel prepared for such assignment. Congratulations to Joel on the new assignment. And in fact, something that you may not know is Joel has done a lot of work to prepare herself for that. She's completed her master's of public administration recently. So congratulations on that. And we're looking forward to Joel's contribution to our leadership team. The September work session, I'm not sure that we are going to need it. We have it on the on the list in the event that you want to talk further about the water rate process. But it will come immediately after the Labor Day holiday. And unless we talk about the water rate process, we have no other issues of an urgent matter that we would like to talk, talk to you about. So we will hold it, and maybe at the end of this meeting you can tell us whether or not you think we should schedule the September work session. But staff's recommendation is that we would cancel that work session with no pending items. My schedule, I'll be out of the office August 25th to September 1st. I'm going to celebrate my mother's 94th birthday, so it's kind of exciting for us as a family. In my absence, Andrew Carlstrom will be the AIC for the CEO on August 25th through the 27th. And then Tim Boylan will fill in from the 28th through the 1st. With that, I will turn it over to Justin Carlton, who's going to give tonight's director's report.
Good evening, President Fisher and commissioners. Tonight I'm wanting to provide a little more insight into the adopted strategic initiative that the finance department is undertaking as part of the 2527 strategic plan. So we have one initiative for the upcoming biennium, and that's to establish the business processes and tools required to perform the duties of the managing agency once we are in operations. Or as Paul likes to call it, we're going to redo the plumbing. And I'd like to thank Copilot for the image. I tried it in ChatGPT and Copilot, and Copilot's was definitely a lot better, just for future reference. So what all does that entail as we're transitioning from the construction phase to the operations phase? A couple of key points. The WWS IGA Exhibit One, which is what lays out the ownership allocation. That's really been sort of the governing document that we rely on in terms of how we constructed, the accounting, and the information that we track and report on as it relates to the construction phase. So the costs are allocated to the partners based on ownership capacity. The costs are really project-based in terms of what we're tracking. So we have actually contracts, projects, projects become assets. And so that's the emphasis of what it is that we have to track, report on, and the data that we use to to share with our partners in terms of allocating costs. The primary system of record is E-Builder, which is our program management information system. So it's really a central repository for everything related to budget information, the actual spend, contract information. We have terabytes and terabytes of data related to different process approvals. And so it was it was a highly customized and configured, not customized. Tim's not here, you would have corrected me on that. Configurable system that we built specifically for the program, and so we've been relying on that. And we're going to be transitioning away from that in the future. And then lastly, in terms of what gets reviewed and approved, we have this program team that we've established with the WWSP that does the reviews and approvals of invoices. We still have our internal WWSS or WWSP leadership functional managers do the final approval. So a TVWD employee always signs off on these things. But there's a whole support group in place that actually helps move those things along expeditiously. As we transition to the operations phase, we're now focusing a lot of what we're building out on the WWSS IGA Exhibit Six, which you may recall, the financial procedures were actually amended last year. And so we had our consultant work with the finance committee and the management committee. We revised the financial procedures based on sort of the future state of the WWSS. And so now we're going to be managing to those procedures. So now costs are going to be allocated based on ownership capacity as well as usage. So we have some things that are fixed in nature that are based on on the amount people own versus based on the amount of water that is being produced for the benefit of each partner. Costs are going to focus on the activities that we're doing. So different activities had different costs associated with them, as well as locations of those activities. So we had to build out a system that was able to track not just what we were doing, but where we're doing it. And it's going to rely on more systems now. So Logos ERP, our financial management software, City Works, our computerized maintenance management system, as well as our SCADA system are going to be systems of record. They're all necessary for us to implement the business operations phase. And then lastly, TVWD and City of Hillsborough staff are going to have roles to play in terms of reviewing and approving invoices. So we need to set up the systems that will allow that invoice process to flow efficiently and so that we can get our vendors paid on time. We broke our initiative up into seven key activities. These have been underway for for a few months now. So some of them are complete, some of them are in process. And we've had to start on some of those activities, and you can see the estimated completion date there. So first activity was our identify the activities we need to be tracked. So we actually did that as we went into the budget development phase. In my prior life as a software consultant, one of the first questions we always asked our clients on the discovery and planning phase is what is it that you need to budget on? And what is it that you need to report on? And so that was no different in developing this system is making sure we identified what what activities we were going to track and how we were going to do that. Then we needed to develop an accounting schema, so we had to have general ledger accounts and project numbers that we were able to bring the information in and report out on. And then we needed to configure our systems to actually track those things. So we're in the process of doing that now. We also need to create a new cost allocation model based on the adopted financial procedures. That work has been started. We just need to kind of test out the plumbing per se on those to make sure it's working appropriately once we have data to flush through. And then we need to create documents of the new processes and training and reference materials so that a lot of people who are engaged in these things for the first time have the ability to to refer back and get guidance on on how their roles are changing and how important it is to make sure that we're capturing this information correctly. We'll use those materials to train our internal staff, as well as our partner staff that'll be working on the program. And then finally, the last piece of the puzzle for us is we have a cost allocation plan that provides this information on what we use to recover our indirect costs associated with being the managing agency. That plan that's currently used was really geared more towards the construction phase. It's pretty long in the tooth now. So we're going to be going out, we'll be doing a request for a new ICAP plan and model. And so we anticipate that work will be kind of the the tail end of this because we do have rates that are effective now. But we want to modernize our model so it it's geared more towards the new structure of our operations. That's what we're going to be working on for the next couple of years, and I'm happy to answer any questions regarding our initiative. Thank you.
So President Fisher, that concludes the report of the Chief Executive Officer and Management Staff.
We'll now turn to reports of meetings attended. Commissioner Doan.
Me?
Yep.
Okay. Let's see, I have tonight's meeting, the work session in early August. And then I met with Paul a little bit later in early August. We went over generally knowledge things.
Commissioner Duggan.
On the 23rd of July, I attended the Metro Impact Meeting, where I was needed to help gain a quorum so that we could approve minutes. And so I fulfilled my role as the special district's alternate. We also received a summary of the past legislative session and Metro's work on increasing incentives for building more housing in the region. On the fourth, I had my meeting, monthly meeting with Paul Matthews. On the fifth, we had our board work session. On the seventh was the WWSS Board Meeting and Executive Session, where we adopted our bylaws and adopted an amendment to the PLM 1.3 contracts. On and then tonight's meeting on the 20th. That's the month of August.
Commissioner Lysick.
On July 18th, I attended the Barney JWC Quarterly Meeting. On August 12th, I met with CEO Matthews for our monthly touch base and then tonight's meeting.
Commissioner Sanders.
Yes, this will sound very repetitive. On the 18th, the Joint Water Commission Barney Reservoir Meeting, where we also more or less just approved minutes, so we had quorum. It was a good, happens in the summer. The August 5th Board Work Session, the August 7th Agenda Planning Meeting, where we set today's agenda. August 11th with our one-on-one with Paul Matthews and tonight's meeting. That's it.
Well, as we ended the legislative session in June, summer is typically sort of like legislative update town hall season from various office holders in Washington County. So I've been attending a lot of those events outside of my typical TVWD meetings with our CEO for our monthly check-in and our work session and our agenda planning sessions. I also got to attend the Aloha Historical Society Meeting, which was sort of a a new one, and present on the history of the Twelton Bay Water District and how it formed. And then this weekend, I attended an infrastructure session for the Platform Convention of the Democratic Party of Oregon, where I got to share water policy infrastructure ideas with folks in attendance. And that's been sort of my month. Do we have any topics to be raised by commissioners? Okay, see none, we will move to public comment. Public comment time is set aside for persons wishing to address the board on items on the consent agenda and matters not on the agenda. Additional public comment will be invited on agenda items as they are presented. Do we have any persons who wish to comment?
Not seeing any.
Okay. Move on to the consent agenda. Consent agenda items are considered to be routine and may be enacted in one motion without separate discussion. Any board members may request that an item be removed by motion from discussion and separate action. Any items requested to be removed from the consent agenda for separate discussion will be considered immediately after the board has approved those items, which do not require discussion. So we have our minutes from July 16th Board Meeting and our work session minutes from August 5th. Do I have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda as presented?
I move to accept the consent agenda as offered.
This is John Don, so moved.
All those in favor, please say aye.
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 All those oppose? The motion passes. We will now move into the business agenda, the adoption of TVWD rate process.
Thank you, President Fisher, and good evening again, commissioners. So tonight, we're bringing forward the rate process that we've been in discussion with you about over the last few months. Tonight, we'll be presenting the proposed water rate increases that would go into effect November 1st, 2025 and 2026, as well as providing an overview of the outreach efforts associated with the rate adoption process. So you're familiar with our financial management process. I've been talking about this now for a little bit. We are at the tail end of our process with the the rate setting process. So what we're looking for this evening is guidance on the communications, as well as the the actual requirements of doing a rate increase. The rate increase that we are proposing is 3% for each of the fiscal years. That is based on the approved financial plan and the adopted financial strategy that we brought forward to the Board of Commissioners. What that looks like in terms of changes to the specific Block 1 and Block 2 rates, you can see on the screen here. So our current Block 1 rate of $10.08 would increase to $10.38 November 1st, 2025, and 10.69 November 2026. Our Block 2 rate would increase from 14.36, this current rate, to 14.79 November 1st, 2025, and 15.23 November 1st, 2026. In addition to that, our fixed charges will increase also by 3%. I'm not going to go through each of these, but our most common meter size for residential customers would go from its current rate of $30.47 to $31.38 in November of 2025, and then $32.32 the following year. How that looks like in terms of impacting what are we consider a typical customer? A typical customer is based on the most common bill that we issue, which is based on seven CCFs or seven units per month. We do bill bimonthly, but we obviously break it into a monthly equivalent for comparative purposes to other utilities. Currently, a customer using seven CCFs per month, their their bill would be $101.03. Based on the 3% increase effective November 25th, that would increase by $3.01. And then in November of 2026, that would increase an additional $3.11 for a typical customer. You can see below, we are presenting also how that would impact the customers that are participating in our customer assistance program. So these are the customers that receive a 20% bill discount on the water portion of their services. And so you can see for them, the impact from the rate increase would result in a monthly increase of $2.40 in November of 2025. And then in 2026, an additional increase of $2.49. Under ORS 264, we are have a requirement to notify all our customers. We can do that through either a bill notification or mailing customers' information directly. Obviously, with the bimonthly billing cycle, it does not allow us to notify them within the 30-day window we're required to do so. So we do, we're using the billing process, so we do mail postcards. So we would notify our customers of of the potential 3% increase. We're also required to hold a public hearing. But in addition to that, best practices that we've always historically done is hold additional information sessions for our customers. So we'll hold a series of open houses, as well as provide different methods for customers to provide comments to the board that would be included in the public record. The proposed process, as you can see here, is scheduled out to begin with what we have called our virtual open houses or our Talkin' Water Series. So these would be online sessions that we would hold Tuesday, September 9th, from noon to 1:30, as well as one Wednesday, September 10th, in the evening from 6:00 to 7:30, and then followed by a in-person open house that we would hold here at the district headquarters on Saturday, the 13th, from 9:00 AM to 10:30 AM, where we would collect public comment through that period. And then we would hold the formal public hearing at the regular board meeting on the 17th, where you would receive any testimony from the public at that time. And then we would close the public comment period on September 24th at 4:00 PM. So any comments that arrive after that time would not be included in the record. And then followed by the actual adoption of the rate increases at the regular board meeting scheduled for October 15th. Staff does recommend the adoption of Resolution 2025, which would establish the rate process for the 2527 biennium. That will establish the September 17th is the date of the public hearing that will authorize management to go ahead and begin mailing the notices to the public. And it will direct our staff to prepare and hold the open houses that I mentioned above. And that will also limit the public comment period until 4:00 PM on September 24th, 2025. The next steps, assuming you do adopt the the resolution, would be to go ahead and begin mailing the postcards and conducting the open houses, as well as prepare for the public hearing and receiving public comments, and then followed by the final adoption in October. If the board chooses not to adopt the resolution, we would forego a rate increase for fiscal year '25 and come back to the board later in the spring with revised financial information and proposed rate increases for future years. With that, I'm happy to take any questions that you may have.
October are going to be setting the rates for both years.
Correct, yes.
Justin, this won't be a question, but it will be my comments with regards to adoption of this resolution. In specific, we had a very healthy and courteous discussion during our work session. Out of respect for the comments that people made, I wanted to do some additional research with regards to their comments. And one of them was about, you know, receiving a signal from customers about the possibility of the impact either adopting or not adopting. And I have to concur that if we were not to adopt this resolution and not increase rates this year, we probably wouldn't hear from any customers. They they probably wouldn't pat us on the back. That is true. What I did find was when we did the rate increase in 2023, we had a high number of people commenting about the impact it would have on their lifestyles, especially those people who were on fixed incomes. So they're from two years ago, they're still on my mind. Even though this rate increase is nowhere near what it was in 2023, it still is another rate increase. Following up that, because we can always say, well, those folks that needed assistance, we could put them on the customer assistance program. Remembering Professor Tia Doros comments and doing again some additional looking, even in our best-case scenario, we're going to maybe get 15 to 18% of the people of need, one in, less than one in five. And the best-case scenario was the the wonderful city of Philly, brotherly love, where they reached 3.33, you know, 33%. So I guess in baseball and customer assistance, that's the only place where one in three is a good thing. Whereas if we chose not to adopt this resolution today and and stay with our current rates, not increase our rates for 2025, 26, we would reach 100% of those people in need. So that those were the points that were made in our in our work session last week. Took them all very much to heart, but my my position, as I sit here now, would be to choose not to adopt the resolution. But I'm certainly open to additional discussion.
Well, as I stated at the work session, I think there is some reason to delay this to give people hope that the world is not completely weird. You know, we've, we've got tariffs in and out. We've got various levels. And I think if we were to just hold off, that would be helpful. On the other hand, considering all the stuff we've learned today, I think we may need the revenue. So I can go either way on this, but I'm more inclined from a humanitarian standpoint to not have a rate increase.
So apologies for missing the work session, where there was a much more robust discussion than I think we're going to get into this evening. I very much appreciate the idea of delivering rate relief to our customers. What I would be critical of is the financial stewardship that we have towards the system as a whole is more important than a delayed rate increase. If we would like to have a discussion about expansion of the cap program or discrete reductions in operating costs that would be made hand in hand with changes to our rate forecast, I would love to have that discussion as part of our our broader financial planning and budget cycle. So I I didn't have the chance to say this in person, but I will continue to be very supportive of the rate increase that we adopted in line with our financial forecast. And that is reflected as a 3% rate increase here.
Like to say a few things. I also am very sympathetic to putting off a rate increase this year. If we were going to do it, this is the year we probably most able to and not cause major problems future. However, my concern
However, my concern is that it really won't put off pain with the amount of uncertainty that we have if it means a greater rate increase in years going out based on the so many things, so many risks that we face in these coming years. I'm very confident in staff's work. I'm very appreciative of staff's work that gave us all the information that makes me comfortable, that we're in a much better position than many of our partners, many of our regional regional folks that we deal with. Hope that we can not have a difficult conversation next year or the year after based on some unforeseen impact to our revenue situation and to our expense side of things. So I'm inclined to support staff's proposal right now, mostly because I don't think that our community will notice. And they will definitely notice in a couple of years if we're not sticking to our financial plan and something happens such that we have to increase rates greater than our financial forecasts have called for. So I'm I'm leaning toward approving, moving ahead with the rate increase proposal that staff has put on the table tonight.
Well, I think I'll just reiterate my concern from the work session that I think delaying a rate increase is not the same as giving the community a sustainable way forward to reduce their burdens. I believe in giving hope to folks. And my view of giving hope in these times that we're finding ourselves in is that we operate a good, quality, effective local government compared to what we're seeing in other parts of this country. And when I see that we've developed a financial plan that makes sense for not only us as an organization, but for our rate payers and the public, that gives me hope that there are still folks out there willing to do the hard work of governing in these very strange times. So again, I'm also in favor of hearing more conversations about how we can reduce real burdens on our customers and our community. And if that's more advocating for programs like a LIWAP at the state level, I want to be part of those discussions as an organization. But I'm inclined right now to go with the plan that was agreed upon in our budget process. Do I have a motion and a second to approve Resolution twenty twenty-five?
This is Commissioner Lysick, so moved.
This is Commissioner Duggan, second.
Okay. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 All those opposed?
Aye.
The ayes have it, the motion passes. Thank you, Commissioners.
Commissioner Sanders, did I get a vote from you on that?
You did, I voted aye. I'm sorry. I voted affirmative.
Thank you.
Is that clear enough?
Yes, thank you.
Well, with that, folks, I would thank you all for your work. Board members, thank you all for your efforts, and I will adjourn this meeting.